It is six o'clock. All right, I call this meeting to order, please rise. Nick, would you have our prayer, please?
My Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and your mercy. We seek wisdom tonight to deal with the issues at hand. Whatever we say and do, Father, we bring glory and honor to you. God in direct now, all we ask is in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're not already done so, please sign in. Anton, we have a special guest, do you want to?
Yeah, so we must recognize Green County Councilwoman Kelly Zimmerley. She's in the middle there, we're glad to have her. She does tune into our meetings. So she already has had a warm-up to, you know, some of our discussions and who, who's who. But she's been on the council, you're in your second term now?
Yes.
And you represent a district which includes Worthington, Swit City, or are you at-large?
No, I'm a district, that's like Owensburg and Swit City.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, yeah, right up against Owen County.
Yes.
So, you know, just like us. We're glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. All right, 2026 budget review. So we have a few items we needed to address regarding our budget. First, do we want to tackle raises and decide on that?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why we called this meeting is because if the council decides to go further with employee compensation, we can give the auditor plenty of time to do all those numbers, because you'll have to redo every single department, literally, in line item, which we can do, that's not a problem, but we need time to do it. So this is a golden opportunity if we're wanting to go either further with going, getting closer to the midpoint, for example, or, and/or, if you want to do a COLA, like we talked about before, for folks, especially that wouldn't otherwise have any kind of an increase in the base. So it's purely up to the council what kind of combination or how far you might want to go with it. The cost projections were given to you during the workshops, and those still pretty much apply, and I can plug in the newest numbers and kind of confirm those. But, you know, we talked about the jail, and there's other things going on, and so it just depends on your comfort level, on what we can afford, and how far you want to go with that.
So so far, we've decided to come, bring everyone up to the low point of our new wage study, and that's where we're at. So what's the mind of the council?
Didn't we find that at the low point, there was some that had been, pay scale was higher yet?
Mm-hmm, yes.
From last year? So how do you handle this? I don't think we cut people's pay.
Well, definitely not. I think, you know, if there's people that are at the midpoint, eventually that should be our goal anyway, and then just kind of ahead of the game.
So basically, the way we have right now, that they just, it's not that they would get a cut at all, they would just not get the increase in their base salary.
So there's some that wouldn't, if we get a raise, there's some that wouldn't even get a raise.
Right, the way we have it right now.
I would feel more comfortable left by the way that we're in now. By the looks of some of this.
I think the next question is, can we, can we financially afford to give more money out?
I don't see how we could, really.
I mean, we're looking at a major project with the jail project. But then again, I don't want to say that that's going to lock the workers of the financial pay increase, but then again, you know, when you crunch to dollars, you only go so far.
Yeah, with the jail, what is unfortunate about that is that's going to be our largest liability and our largest asset all at once. And it's, it's not the fault of the other kind of employees that have no connection to the jail whatsoever, no law abiding citizen does, doesn't do a whole lot for. So your, your employees that are in here, it's hard enough to get the good ones and retain them. You know, and I think the cost of living is, is minimal there. However, we also have a stack of additional appropriations and things like that, which shouldn't affect the, the pay as much as it does the department heads reeling it in. Without, you know, any kind of vote, I was talking to Anton, and he was giving me the schematics a little bit of how things would look. I'm one in favor, we've had the discussions of employees are, sometimes with their longevity are close or even higher than, you know, their supervisors. I'm not saying anything for this year, but I think in the future, I would like to at least see on paper what it would look like to get the, your department heads and some of your elected officials, you know, mainly in the courthouse, not speaking for council members, of course, but to see them at least to the midpoint. I think they're deserving of that.
If we would go a COLA, even those individuals that's overpaid now supposedly, according to the
Wage study?
The sheet, they, they'd just be far their head yet. Unless you give a COLA, and there's, there are certain areas you don't give the COLA to, but then again, is that fair? I, I don't know, got mixed emotions about that. And yet, I, I think, Joe, you're right, there's some of these offices that probably deserve that raise. Yeah. So how do we handle it and not break for them or custom or break out of the sheet that we paid thousands of dollars to get put together? What's your idea, Anton?
Well, you know, we've done it in the past, where we have not only given the normal, like, an amount towards the, what I would call the targets, you know, getting people to the midpoint, but we also gave a small COLA for folks that didn't otherwise receive anything. What that means, as you alluded to, is that folks that are already, let's say, ahead or higher than where they should be, they'll still move, they'll inch higher, but not as high as other employees that have, that are below. So, so there's still, you're still making progress, you're still calibrating everything, but then you're also giving something to those that didn't otherwise see an adjustment. And it's just, that's just the cost of trying to be as fair as possible. If you were to give a one and a half percent minimum COLA, the additional annual cost system-wide is about $55,000. And we can certainly afford that. So it's not a matter of affordability, it's just how do you want to, how do you want to handle or, or those situations where folks don't otherwise see an increase? So
What about 2%? Have you ever voted on 2%?
Yeah, so 2% would be 76,000. The higher you go, though, then you start shrinking that again, you're, you know, you want to be somewhat careful on that end, because then, then you are not, you're, you're creating a off-balance a little bit, the more, the higher you take.
As much as we want to, I think one and a half would be kind of our gap.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So that's just the risk you run, just because of the math, but, and again, anybody in the system, they'd get the greater of. So if, whatever the COLA is, if that's a higher number that they would net from that, then the, the wage target, then they, they would get the COLA, you know, that would help them. If the wage target's better, then they're not going to get the COLA. So it's the greater of the two.
So you're saying because of the wage target, it could be some people that we gave a COLA, wouldn't get it?
Technically, yes, because they're already getting a, more of an increase because we're moving them up towards that.
Whichever would be higher.
Yeah, their target is higher.
Right.
Yeah.
So everybody would get an increase, but depending on whether they were getting up to the target or they were getting the COLA?
Well, I'm going to test the waters, I'm going to test the waters tonight. I make a motion that we grant a 2% COLA to the county employees. I understand what you're saying, Anton, there could be some because of the raise that was given that they won't get anything, or won't get as much. Is that, is that right, Anton?
Run that by me again.
With the target that you've set, that we've already set, if we would go a 2% COLA, there could be some that would get a very little, or maybe even none, but then, most of the people would at least get 2% on top of the targeted.
It's kind of like a minimum. I mean, you know, no one would get any less than 1.5 or 2 or whatever you set COLA to. It's just really there to help folks that are at zero. That's, that's what it's about, is the folks that have, that are at a zero increase, the COLA is how they get extra money.
I make a motion that we adopt a 2% COLA for the county employees for budget year '26.
Motion made, is there a second?
Well, I tested the waters.
I'll make a motion to give the county employees a 1.5% COLA increase.
Motion made by Joe, is there a second?
I would second that.
Do we want more discussion? You said that would be around 55,000?
Yeah, 55,000 total cost system-wide.
I think if we don't do that, we'll spend that much in training new people when we start losing people.
Yeah. Yeah, Joe made the motion, Dan has seconded it.
Dan seconded it, did you, Dan?
Any other discussion?
I really think that's a happy medium, because it gives something to everybody in this, and it's still a work in progress, we're still going to keep moving forward every year, more and more, we need to continue. We don't want to lay flat for very long, because we still have some inflationary pressures on wages and demands on that. But then we also have to be careful with our finances. So, you know, we've done a lot this year, we've really attacked a lot of areas.
More than what we expected.
Right, better than we anticipated. So I think it's a good, happy medium.
Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? All those opposed?
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll work with Sheila then to update all of those different numbers in the system.
Tax payers didn't get a raise.
So that, that'll help, take care of that. There are some other loose-end wage stuff, and I, if I may, bring, bring up some of those. The first, we talked about the, the building department. The consultant took another look at that based on the fact that there actually is an employee in that office, and it's been a little bit of a, it too, over the years, has changed dramatically. If you look just three years ago, there was, there was hardly anything there. And yes, they provided new targets for that. I'm going to give those to you, just for your reference, and I have, I have plugged them in here. The midpoint is 48,462, the low point is 43,616. And we already voted to take everything to the low point, so that's the amount, the new amount that we would end up using for that position. On the budget side, we originally had, that's probably what Nicole's going to right now, 20% from the surveyors. Yeah, so it had been originally 39,100, is that what you had? Yeah. So we would need to change that to that new low point in that department.
Is there any voting on?
Yeah, I think so, unless the consensus is there to honor that, you know, it does match up with our system, and if we're, if we gave everybody else the low, then we would need to follow suit, make sure that's in there, so, yeah.
Do we have an updated job description for that?
I believe so. And then with, for budget purposes, the, it would be 43,910, with some longevity in there. 43,910. So is that, are we good with that?
What were all the positions that we were revisiting with the study? We had three or four, five?
You mean the job description?
The job, well, there was job, a couple of them that we were going to talk to, that you guys were going to get back with the company and say, okay, these jobs also include this, this, and this, and this, and
Some of that was all the exempt versus exempt.
Yeah. There was a handful of positions that we were going to revisit.
Yeah, I've got the list. Yeah. So we had talked about the building admin versus inspector and that part of it, so we were discussing that. Another one was elected officials. We were looking into why they were different or looked at differently from department heads. We looked at maintenance supervisor versus handyman, there was going to be a rework on that. We talked about chief deputy and the percentage of the sheriff versus direct recommendation, employees being excluded versus exempt, evidence room manager, EMA director exempt versus non-exempt, the difference between paramedics and EMTs. I think that was it.
I can't think of any more.
Yeah. So, building admin versus inspector is what we're, what we're looking at first, just to, we threw that out there. Oh, and the job description on that did already mention flood, floodplain stuff, I think that was a concern, but that's already in there, so, yeah.
But we, we did take out, like, the storage unit management and
Right, yeah, that's not in there. Yeah?
It seemed like there was something else, but
Mapping.
I have nothing else. Joe's looking at this.
Steve, it's all on you. Shh. So as far as the budget, then, is it 43,910, is that the consensus? That is the low point wage?
Do we need to vote on that, or? I don't think so.
Unless there's an objection.
Doing it the same for everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, that would be in line with what we've decided so far. What was that?
How's that going to hold? I mean, is there that much money coming into the building department? Because it's not self-sufficient anymore.
It's waiting until they got done with
Sorry for that.
The financial part of it is still a whole nother issue. We already, before, were looking at a pretty strapped situation there. We talked about, we talked about whether the surveyor could even contribute or not. I don't know if an answer to that has been given. Okay.
Where did it ever come about that the building department needed to be self-sufficient? I've heard it a whole bunch, but
When they started, back in 1992, it was voted at that time and has been over all the years, that it would stay self-supporting, and she'll be lucky if she has enough money to make it to the end of the year, or fall at the end of the season. If it wasn't for the storage unit and the mapping money that has already been promised for this year, there is absolutely no way they would make it financially till the end of this year. On the current budget, and now you're increasing it with not getting any storage and mapping money next year.
Right, but is there any other department that is in the county where the department head has to make sure that it's self-sufficient to have a job, as they'll? Like, I understand it was '92, but
There's other entities that we're making sure are
You're just adding, if it is, if it doesn't, then you'd be adding it to your general fund.
Okay, I understand that. I just think, I think we're probably to the time where it's not, it doesn't have to be self-sufficient.
And it's not optional.
It's a necessary department that we must have.
Yeah, we put money in other places that should be more self-sufficient than the building department.
Is that many?
No, but the rates are extremely low for building permits in Owen County. Not that I want them raised, but they're pretty cheap.
Is there one private that you're interested?
I mean, you could, just, I'm just taking what you're mentioning here and running with it a little bit, you could create it as a department within the general fund. You would have to count the revenue, however, as miscellaneous revenue, you know, of course, that would become the county's, not that specific fund. So there's a, there would just be a net cost, of course, to the general. Did we project revenue to be 90,000? As it stands now?
Yeah.
You know, kind of on average, so, so the department has been pulling in about 90 anyway, but the budget is going to be like 140-something, so there's a gap. You can make some of that up with the fees, which had been discussed. But, so beyond that, you know, you're not talking a huge amount on, taking it on, on the general, but you're eliminating the separate stuff, you know? And I know it's been tradition and that kind of thing, that it'd be separate, but, but we live in a very different time now than we did even 10 years ago, let alone 30 or something. And it is highly critical that we have, you know, the standards followed and the safe building practices and things like that, for the benefit of not only the person that lives there, potentially, or the tenant, but also neighbors and other properties and things like that. So it's grown more important over the years, independent of, you know, whether it's separate or not.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, this has been our average income on the storage unit per month.
All I can tell you is that the average is about $52,000 a year, but also commissioners have discussed, and they are, one, they took that away from the building department, two, they're talking about getting rid of the storage units by the end of the year. So that 52,000 that's coming in
Yeah, plus if, if the end result is selling that property, then it's going to be a non-issue beyond a certain point. The other thing, too, I guess that there's a little bit of a silver lining in it, is if you did move it to general, the group insurance would not go with that, it would go into edit, because all of our general fund-related positions are in that. So there's 20,000 then that's taken off the cost that the general wouldn't take on, so
So they're self-funding their own insurance then, as well?
Pretty much, that's where it's been paid for.
So, yeah, I think that was probably a thing of the past, too, and I, I don't know where we get that changed or where we start that process, but it, I'm with Joe, this seems like this should be a department within the structure of their own department head and everything else. I'm not following. Come on, Sheila, say it.
Open discussion.
That's the case, then you have the health department, they're paying their own insurances, and they're doing it, why shouldn't they be allowed to move that into the edit fund as well?
That's probably, that's probably a real deal, yeah.
The purpose of, of these funds are, they're not part of the county general, and they're not part of the levy funds. So any of them, really, that are on the bottom halves of your list, they could all say, well, how come we're having to pay insurances out, you know, of ours, you have the grants you've got, probation has, or several of these departments, they could use the same excuse, if the county's going to pay insurance for one department, then why aren't they paying it? Because the health department could use that insurance money as well, as, as well as anybody else, so, and I'm just, that's just because I'm familiar with that one. But again, and same thing with probation, and they're, they, they all have insurance coming out, so if we're going to move it from one department, or we're going to put somebody in the county general fund, then you could use that excuse for two of the other offices as well. I'm not saying don't do it, it's not up to me, it's actually up to the commissioners, whether they want it to do it, and they would be the ones that would have to vote to make it part of the county general fund. Obviously, you would want to do something that's going to benefit the county. They've been talking for two years and raising fees, I don't, it hasn't happened yet. You know, they need to follow through with local help, the revenue and stuff, especially if you're going to increase in, in the salaries and, and the admin positions. And it's always been that the building inspector was the primary in there due to all of the educational purposes and those ends of things, and now you're making the admin that, so it does need to match the job description, but
Yeah, so you're right, you mentioned commissioners, they'd have to have an ordinance to restructure that department, and assuming they go for that and do that, then we can easily create a department and roll everything over. The health insurance is different, though, I'll say that, because from a general fund standpoint, the reason why we don't have it there is because we wanted to free up that general fund, and it's a part of the, it is part of the property tax, but general fund also receives income tax money, and it doesn't matter whether the income tax is from edit or not, it's still income tax. So that's really not a division, quite the division you think it is, other than it is how much the budgets are and the limitations of both budgets, and edit just has more capacity. So it's easier to fund it there than it is the general fund, but it's still income tax, you know, that's involved with both of those, so. But when you have a highway department, for example, or, yeah, or, or another fund like that, that's why we separate that, that's just, that's, that's how it's always been done. The money's the money, the costs are the costs, it's where you put them, it just, it needs to be clean, so the auditor is easy for them to track. We've got it broken down pretty well and charted out so far, but the cost is still the cost, that's not going away, so. So do we just need to maybe give the commissioners a chance to talk about this then, before we really do that, right?
Before we
I mean, they're going to have to make a decision.
Oh, most definitely. It started out, as we were talking about her salary coming to the low point, I don't know how it morphed into this, but, so
Yeah, good discussion.
I mean, I know, I know exactly what you're saying, that it needs to be self-funding, and that's how it morphed into this, but I don't know, I, okay, honestly, I'm still have, you know, a question about her salary being at that level, because we, I mean, took, we took duties away, I mean, she doesn't have mapping, she doesn't have the storage units, and it's still up to that level. So I guess that's my, my question, why?
We can always follow back up with the consultant again. I would say they, they did look at other counties that have a administrator of that nature, and that's what that pays. I mean, 39, in that respect, seems a little low, but for a department head, so I don't know.
Yeah, and then you had to be super Yeah, and you have to be super careful because if, if you were to change pay because of somebody's job description, then you might cut there, but you're gonna owe a lot to Matt Miller and Chris Lonsford. A lot. If you go, if you go off changing your job descriptions and pay off that.
They would've, they would've come up with the target based on the most recent, you know, job description. And we know that that included the adjustments that were made a year ago because there was a new job description that took away the storage units and those kind of things, so... It seems like it's current, but we can double-check it.
So, looking at the, at our past budgets, I mean, this year's budget, the appointed pay was... Was the, what, the thirty-nine thousand four eighty-nine?
Yes, that's correct. It was different because there was a different employee at the time and they got more longevity, so...
So the 2024 was the, the prior.
Right.
That included the storage unit and...
It also, yes, it also...
So we're talking, I mean, if we're talking about the difference, I mean, I, it, so it did decrease, yeah.
It, it did quite a bit, it's just now it's catching it back up.
But it also, that 2024, that includes the longevity that employee had, correct? Which was quite a bit.
Yeah, because all, that being filtered out, you know, would have been thousands of dollars there, so...
Yeah, well, calm time wasn't, well, yeah. That came from somewhere else, I think. So do you, do...
So do we wanna, I'm gonna make a motion that we refer this to the commissioners and allow them an opportunity to review it and hear, hear what our discussion was and see if they would like to have this as a part, just a regular department within the general instead of a separate arrangement here.
Motion made by Ann-Tine, second by Daniel.
I'll second.
Am I seen? Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Just to get that moving. Again, final decision's nowhere near that, but we do need to keep it moving. As far as pay, I'm gonna make a motion that we go with the low point, just like we've done for everybody else and keep that consistent. I know it may be a little bit of a shock and a little bit of a difference, but it is in line with what so far we've, we've been doing. But I do think as a part of that, we will commit to double-check that with the consultant. We'll follow up on that, so...
Was that a motion?
Yep.
Motion made by Ann-Tine, second by Daniel. All those in favor? Motion carried.
I think that takes here the building department.
So that, where's your per, like, any of that, so that's...
We'll, we'll have to, we'll go over our numbers and match that up later. Let's not worry about that now. But yeah, we'll double-check it. Do you? Okay.
Just, let's get it over with.
Let's take a look here, it'll just take a couple minutes. Okay, so forty-three, nine, ten. And then we already had thirty-nine, nine, fifty-two for regular wages. FICA is now sixty-seven, ninety-eight. Perf, ten thousand, six, sixty-three. Everything else I had the same, so I've got a hundred and forty-two thousand, three, twenty-three. We match. And so definitely the surveyor thing, we're, we're, I can delete those notes on surveyor stuff because we don't need, that's not gonna apply, so... Delete. Okay, so that cleans things up. So EMS, Chris, we, we talked extensively with the consultant on that. They still stand by their data. The difference between a paramedic and EMT at the moment is about seven at the low end. Now, it'll grow when you go closer to that midpoint, because that, their difference expands. But at a minimum, it's gonna be seven, it's not gonna really change from that moving forward. You know, I know I was out of whack with the last couple of years and the confusion of, of the whole dispatcher and jailer thing, but as it stands now with the latest recommendation, it's all back together and matches the way it should. There's no one that's getting any one advantage over another, if that makes sense. Whereas before, there was, and that created some disparagey in there and, and... But we've, we've gotten to the point where it's corrected. I would really hate to go back the other direction and, and make another exception and then set off another chain reaction across that entire category of physicians.
You, you mentioned that you think it's back in line or whatever.
Right.
But I, I was gonna question according to who?
Well, according to...
I think, I think you gotta give your consultants way too much credit. I, I don't believe that they looked at her job description and then, whenever they looked, whenever they, I think they went to, I mean, you can't tell me that they pulled everyone's job description and compared it to all the other counties. They didn't do that. And sitting here, in the meeting, sitting here with her the other day, I mean, they didn't compare EMS to any other private service. In fact, she told me there's very few...
There are a few.
Counties that have EMS services. I counted five around us that have it. So where, where are they getting their data other than just...
And we kinda asked them to do that. We asked them to, to check with private...
I think they're giving you fifty thousand dollars and throwing some numbers at you. My first opinion.
And what's the fifty thousand you're referring to?
What you paid to have it done?
We did not pay them fifty thousand. It was eighteen, it was eighteen.
Whatever you paid them, I paid.
Yeah, it's not fifty, that's an incorrect number. But nevertheless, if we don't utilize some kind of service like that, then are we just gonna pull numbers out of thin air? How do we substantiate? We've gotta have something. So I, I'm not sure going without is a good idea, but...
You think that the numbers that they gave you were good and accurate numbers and not taking any private services into account at all?
True, if they didn't take into private account...
We asked them to.
But we, we, even if they put in private, the numbers may go up, but the, the issue is the difference between a paramedic and an EMT, that's the issue. If you're wanting higher pay and higher numbers, anybody can play with whatever numbers they want to their advantage, but that's really not the point. The point is, is, is the difference between an EMT and a paramedic, is that, is that acceptable? Is that sufficient? And I don't, I, to me, I think seven thousand dollars is, is sufficient. But if you went to private, what's, what's the difference between an EMT and a paramedic? Is it ten? Is it close to seven? It's probably pretty similar, you know, similar pattern, even though the numbers might be higher for both, but the difference would probably be close. But that's kind of where we're at, that's what we, that's the number one question we had, was that difference between the two.
I, I would love to see the private included on there because the counties are, one of them was green and putting them, but then you're getting into some other. County rail ambulance service is not super common anymore, and you're not creating more of them. His competition would be, his direct competition is IU Health. I, I thought that should be included.
With our, well, yeah, but that's what I said, when we had our, our conference with them, our phone, I mean, over the phone, I, we asked them to look into private. I mean, IU Health and different, and that, no, that was supposed to have been done. And then, do you have that, I, I could bring up the email that you sent.
Yeah, because if you're paying for a service to be requested, and there's things that aren't on that study that we're requesting for, to give us the best information to make a decision, and not proceed with that, then... I think it's fair, a fair ask of them to revisit that specific part of the wage study. And then, you know, if any other department head shows up and says, "I think they're wrong and here is why, this is what I found," I think it's a valid argument to look into.
I think you'd have to almost separate that out then into, because for example, in that particular grouping, it's the, bear with me here, it's the civilian pole is what they call it. Protective operations, law enforcement, public, public safety, those kind of things, that are not merit like a deputy. And so you've got your jailers in there, your dispatchers, those kind of things. But if you think about this, and I think she maybe touched on that when we talked with her, that in the case of ambulance service, there's the private part and the public part. There is no private part to dispatching, there's no private part to jailers. You see where I'm going with that? And so as far as your comparison and your data sets and how it's classified, you'd have to, you'd have to pretty much separate EMS service into its own class.
Absolutely.
You see where I'm going with that?
What a great idea.
But, we can't do that tonight. I mean, you know, that's not something that just happens, but...
It could've been started three weeks ago when we talked about the budgetary, and it wasn't.
But we didn't know, we don't know how that works, it's a new concept, but it comes to mind that maybe there is a way to do that, but we would still need their help to do that, because we're not, we don't, we're not first in that. We're not, we don't need to make a final decision tonight, so we can still have time. But if that's something the council would like to explore, we could certainly try doing that.
We need to make a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion that we explore with our wage study to include private EMS services as well as county rail ambulance services.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Joe, second by Ann-Tine. All those in favor? Motion carried.
Chris, I got a question. Chris, what do you, what do you believe or know and understand the average salary of paramedic and an EMT that you're, in your mind, what are you comparing it to?
I'm losing people, I'm losing people too. I worry about Morgan County and Bloomington, IU Health Bloomington.
And what's their average starting, what are you losing dollar-wise to, is what I'm getting at?
Paramedic in IU Health Bloomington starts out twenty-five, twenty-six starting wage.
That EMT?
I don't know.
Yeah, and the, the external midpoint is already twenty-five point three four nine, so it's not really that far off as far as the numbers that they've already done in the current data set. It's just that we don't have the resources to take everybody to the midpoint all at once today. We went to the low, but, so there's still, I mean, there's, there's still some pretty realistic numbers here. It's just midpoint versus low point in that range.
What was the low point for us now?
The low point is twenty-two point eight one four. The midpoint is twenty-five point three four nine, and the high point is twenty-seven point eight eight four. So that's kind of your range according to the data set now. And so if you were to go to the midpoint, then yeah, you're pretty much in line with that twenty-five figure. You said IU Health, that's good. So, but it's whether or not we can afford to do that or not and, and how that matches up with what we're doing for other employees in the system.
If we do for one, we gotta do for all.
Right.
Yeah, that's not true.
So...
That's not true. I do not agree with it. I think that you have to favor your essential employees above non-essential because you cannot just go off the street and pick out an employee tomorrow that have to be a trained professional to be in that spot. You can't just go out and find a deputy tomorrow, you can't go out and find an EMT. You could probably go out and find clerical staff. I think you can differ and give raises to certain departments, and it doesn't have to be a principle.
Yeah, but that's why, you gotta be careful with that, Joe, because we're not, the same rate of pay, target amount is not the same for office staff in the courthouse. It's lower than public safety. So you're, that's where you're making up that difference, is the targets are appropriate for the positions and the work that they're doing, hence the job descriptions and the scoring. And so it'd be...
However, like...
Different if they, if the rate was the same, and then you're saying, "Well, now wait a minute, you know, we're paying them more, but them not enough." Then you can say, "Well, that's not the same, we can't hire someone off the street to do that." There's no way.
On the flip side of it though, you have to factor in the fact you can't see, which is competition of employees. They're competing to retain, and not every department in Owen County does that, but your essential employees, your emergency, your dispatch, EMS, and police constantly are competing for the counts.
That's why those targets are higher.
Right, but if we're not even paying our essential employees up to the midpoint, we're all at the low point, you're gonna continue to lose it until you get to it or above it.
True, I mean, that's a true point.
Well, while, Joe, I don't disagree with you, because I thought the same thing two years ago and then sat through these meetings and heard this person say, "Well, I don't, I need this and I need this," and then we were constantly juggling non-stop salaries because it, it just became a huge problem. However, I do agree with you, emergency service, police, law enforcement, all those things are the high priority and what we're here for first. But it did create lots of problems.
We're problem-solving.
So I'm just gonna say it, I'm sorry, because I'm having a hard time sitting here. So you're gonna pay twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents an hour to an office administrator, and that's absolutely nothing against you, but yet we can't give more than twenty-one dollars an hour to...
I agree, I agree.
I just, I, I don't, the balance is not here yet. I don't think we're where it, it should be. I mean, I know you guys voted to do the low and we came in tonight thinking, "Okay, the midpoint," and that's not happening, but you still haven't balanced that median. And again, just like this, and again, absolutely nothing against Heather. She is came into a war zone, but to be making a couple dollars more an hour is, is, I just don't see the fairness there.
So I'm gonna give you the extreme end of this. Let's say we took everybody to the midpoint, just for discussion, okay? That's gonna cost us another seven hundred thousand dollars, okay? So we can do that, gotta pay for it. How are we gonna be able to do that? If you don't have a structure and you don't follow that, you're gonna find this continuous race to the top in a very chaotic manner where we just dealt with for the last three years trying to clean up. You know, there's only so many resources that can go around, regardless of the fund department. Everybody's is important to me, every position needs to be treated in a similar fashion. The targets are the targets, the classifications are the classifications. There, what other method or what other solution would there be that you could implement and make work without sinking the whole ship, if that makes sense? Because we only have so much resource. I would love to take everybody to the midpoint right now, it would be fantastic. The pay levels would be perfect. Chris's paramedics would get more than twenty-five an hour and be right there in line with IU Health. Our deputies, our jailers, everybody would be taken care of. But it comes at a price of seven hundred thousand dollars, and I, we just don't have that today. We, we can make it work over time, which we've committed to do, but we just can't hit that switch and do it all at once now. I mean, that's just the reality of it, so...
You know, and I, I agree, you can't, you can't do it all at once, but that's across the board. That's not your emergency personnel. If you were to, if you were to just select your emergency personnel, it'd never be a lot lower, and then it's a goal we can work towards.
As a department head, I wouldn't be mad about him hitting big... As a department head, I wouldn't be mad about him hitting midpoint and meeting a point. He deserves it, he deserves it. He said lies, yes.
Oh. Just kidding.
So Joe, you made a statement that I agree with. The fact that we have what I can think is personal, professional. I couldn't be an EMS or EMT or a paramedic because I don't, I don't have that education. But I did win a race for clerk and run the clerk's office. And I'm not belittling that at all, I'm just saying, maybe we ought to look at some of these outside of the box and not put everything in the box. Maybe the nine one one and the sheriff department and EMS ought to be in a completely different framework of its own. And, and then that way we could deal with them a little separately, more separately.
How do you do that?
I don't know.
Fairly, how you do that fairly? And I understand fairly is subjective to what we think and what EMS thinks. But when everybody has to be involved and then we've got office staff in the courthouse like, they're gonna give the money away to everybody else, we're not getting anything. I'm all for the emergency service and public safety being number one and highest priority. But also wanna be fair and I also know that maybe we can take some of the highway budget from, there's four million dollars right there we could.
I'm with you on being fair.
And I do understand all of it and I am completely in agreeance that we can't keep people if we can't pay them better than Monroe County. And I know Matt told me last year or whatever time it was, they were losing people going over to Morgan County. And.
Well, there's, there's parts to it, is, is you're never gonna be able to pay more than Monroe or probably even Morgan. There, but at a midpoint, that gap, I'm not saying that's a, it makes it up, but there is value to working in your own community and probably for working for an emergency service in your own community, which would help close the gap from mid to high. And you can keep your folks that you really want here.
And we could vote today to give a two dollar an hour raise to EMTs and paramedics, but then Monroe County tomorrow might do the same thing.
Yeah, and that's not where I'm going.
I'd like to see them all make more money, but.
I'm not saying a raise of, of anything today or approval or anything. I just want the mindset to be opened up, that there is, if you put everybody on a scale, it tips farther towards emergency services. And you can take them out of the box and you can treat them as it's necessary. Because show up on a rec, say, listen, I was trying to be fair. We don't have enough EMTs today, staff squad three or something, you know? There's, there's value and merit to the emergency services that needs to be a different animal and, and handled as well, in my opinion.
Well, I've always felt like emergency services should come first and, you know, above everything else. I don't understand, I mean, why, you know, the wage study does the way they do. I mean, why the gap's not, not farther apart? I know, I know, we asked her to look at private. And so.
We'll go back to the table. I think we, that's fair enough, that's a fair question. We've got time. Let's do it right.
See what we can do.
Right?
Boys, I tell you, my figures don't figure like a lot of them. And I don't see how that we can afford anymore than we can right now. There's seven hundred thousand dollars in this county thing. I, that's a lot of money. I just don't think that we can spend any more money this year. I wish everybody'd get a raise. But my figure don't figure like some of them. If you think that we can figure and pay that much more this year, we'll get in a bind where we can't get it out of unless we do something else.
Is there anything else on?
Okay, so EMS, we talked about that, we're gonna follow up on it. So, anything that involves exempt, non-exempt, excluded, we talked about that. Because I know Jack was, was asking some questions there. Because the commissioners are gonna probably do an overhaul of a personnel policy in the next six months, it was recommended that we just put those changes on hold.
Right.
So if, if, if the report says that this particular position should be exempt or it should be excluded, instead of making those changes, we need to keep them the way they are for now and just go back to that when the personnel policy is done. Because it'll involve definitions, it'll involve, you know, you'll have to add some things in that normally we're not used to seeing, like the excluded part. And I, I think it's wise to have that personnel policy work done first and then go back to that instead of trying to change things now.
Do you need a motion on that? I made a motion that, that, just what Anton spoke. So if anybody remembered what he said, you'll know what the motion is.
Motion made by Nick, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Anton. All those in favor?
All right, so we can take that, those things, kind of put them on hold. We don't, we won't worry about changing those necessarily. So again, that's dealing with the FLSA status and there's three choices. Exempt, non-exempt and excluded. So if there's any change that was recommended in this report to change those, we're just gonna stay with our status quo. We're not gonna change those particular naming.
But you are saying we will address that once the new personnel.
We, we will have to go back to it, yeah. There's some legal and liability components to that that are important that we make sure are correct, so. Elected officials, we asked the question, why, why would they not be something similar to department heads? Because they're also managing departments, they also have a staff budget. And it's interesting, it goes back to the election. If I had my notes correct, Holly, the fact that department heads are subject to at-will employment, they could be fired tomorrow because they did not perform their duty or their job or for whatever reason. Whereas elected officials, technically, they're locked in for four years. You can't just fire them, right? You have to wait for an election. Or maybe they commit a felony, right? But heaven forbid. Or die, right? But, but there's, you know, there's a, a difference in that respect. I don't necessarily agree, agree with that, but I do see why that's different. But that's, that's kind of why generally they're, they are lower on average than your other department heads.
Which doesn't make sense, but yeah.
So that's why. Maintenance supervisor versus handyman, I, we're gonna have to wait for the commissioners to finish that. They talked about reworking that, so that you don't actually have a maintenance supervisor, you have just more of a laborer. And then farm more of the specialty stuff out. That's the impression I got when they described it. So we're gonna have to let them do more work on that. Chief deputy, jail commander, they, they have targets based on what other counties on average pay. They're not necessarily tied, in fact, I think she said, none of them are tied percentage wise. You know, we do seventy percent, for example, for the chief deputy versus the sheriff. And the command, jail commander's sixty percent, if I'm not mistaken. And they just had specific dollar targets, not necessarily percentages. They're, they're all higher, but they're not a flat percentage. Evidence room manager, we're working on it. We've got a draft job description. They're gonna need to score that and give us some kind of target numbers. But we're gonna do it, that's definitely been approved. That's all I had.
Okay, I had, you had nine, nine one one changes. I know that's, that's all of what payroll, right?
Oh, yes, yes, as far, but anything else as far as the wage?
Right, the wages, that's, that's it, right.
So, E, E nine one one, let's go to that here. So if you remember, we kind of left that in limbo. Remember Matt, we left the discussion for follow-up? So we're, we're to that point where we're wrapping it up. What we decided on at the last council meeting is we paid off the loan that was, that was for the project that did the build out and all the equipment and stuff for nine one one. So that's paid off or is being paid off, right? Do we need to do anything further on that or is it a done deal?
No, there'll need to be a resolution to pay it off.
Okay.
So the, the resolution will come from the commissioners.
Okay. Okay, so that's being worked on, we'll have that, that stuff firmed up. Well, for next year, so we zeroed that line item because we don't need to put money in for that. And then we talked about revenue for both of those nine one one funds and how we were pulling a bit more heavy on what would be twelve twenty two, which is, I guess they call it the hold harmless or the minimum guarantee distribution from the state, which is around three hundred thousand, it's two eighty eight the last I saw. And then the other one, which is based on our income tax, our point two percent, which we know has grown since last year. We needed to recalibrate the division between those two funds. And so I put together a rough outline that I think the council needs to look at. Based on trying to keep the line items consistent so we're not splitting things and coming up with figures that are pretty close to those totals on the revenue. So here's what I came up with. For twelve twenty two, we have the appointed pay is still there, we're not changing that. But holiday benefits, we're moving over to twelve thirty five. And then, the regular wages stay in twelve thirty five. And then the FICA and PERF that's related to all that stays in twelve thirty five. So that way, unless it's the director and the overtime and the part-time, all your regular wages is gonna be out of twelve thirty five. And then the associated holiday benefits, the FICA and the PERF are also together with that grouping of employees. Does that make sense? So that's kind of what, what we were, were thinking there. But part-time and overtime would stay in twelve twenty two. And then the FICA and PERF there would, would figure that and on the appointed pay amount. So they're all together. And then we kept the equipment, the training, contract services, group insurance and conference registration in twelve twenty two. The total is three hundred and thirteen thousand then in twelve twenty two. And that's totally doable for the revenue that they get. And then in twelve thirty five, we had five hundred and forty three thousand there. Our revenue is gonna be four, five forty eight. So that, doing it that way kind of gets us pretty close, I think, to those totals. Everybody's still paid for, the raises we approved are still programmed into these totals. It's just how they're divided between the two funds. So. Matt, you're shaking your head, is that okay? Okay. Maybe say you do some work, I don't know, but, okay. So as far as line items for the council, is that, is that recalibration something that you're good with?
Any questions on that?
So as far as the individual line items, do you wanna update those then? Okay.
What's the, what's the second charge? What's their title at the dispatch?
Okay, that's a very good question. So, there's still an overhaul going on that's still in process and there's, there's, that's not gonna be completed now. But I think there'd been some different discussions about whether to continue having assistant or not. Maybe the creation of some leads or supervisory designations. But they're all working on that. And at whatever point they do that, I think it's gonna be fairly cost neutral. So, so as far as where and how much, that's probably not gonna really change in what we just did here. It's just, they may tweak a little bit, but I think our overall split's gonna be pretty consistent. Does that sound accurate? Okay.
And your cash balances will support both.
And we're good on cash balances for, for a while, so. Okay, so appointed pay, I had a sixty two thousand five thirty five. That didn't really change.
Sixty two five thirty five.
Yep. Holiday benefits are zero, regular wages are zero. FICA was seventy eight forty four. PERF, ten thousand three sixty four. Overtime, thirty thousand. Part-time, ten thousand. And part-time, was that still okay? To have part-time? Or should it really just all be in overtime?
Probably overtime.
Okay. So, are we good with doing forty thousand in overtime but zero in part-time?
I think so, there's that, that position's not gonna be built.
Let's do that.
For a long time.
All right. Equipment, twelve thousand, training, three. Contract services, sixty five. Group insurance, one hundred and ten thousand. Conference and registration, two thousand. I've got three hundred and thirteen thousand eight sixty three.
Three hundred and twelve thousand seven.
Maybe it's on the FICA and PERF.
FICA seventy eight three four, and PERF is ten three sixty two.
Eleven four eighty four. Three thirteen eight sixty three, okay. And then twelve thirty five, regular wages, four hundred and twenty six thousand one fifty eight. Holiday benefits, twenty two thousand nine forty seven. FICA, thirty four thousand three fifty seven. PERF, fifty thousand three hundred. Supplies, thirty six hundred. Uniforms, twenty five hundred. Contract services, three. Five hundred and forty two thousand eight sixty one. So we match. Yep.
I do, I got it, I do have one question, just to. On, in the courthouse, the chief deputies of elected officials, what's the percentage that they are?
It's eighty five.
What is, Matt knows.
Well, it's been at seventy. But there's, it has its own targets now.
See where I'm going now?
Why, I wonder why that's different?
Don't know.
Mr. Fairness?
What's that?
Did you hear that over there, Mr. Fairness? All the chief deputies are eighty five percent in the courthouse of all elected officials. Except the chief deputy of the sheriff.
Anton, is that in the makeup of the wage study?
Yeah, I mean, the makeup of the wage study is they have a set target for those, those positions as far as chief deputy and jail commander, and we just touched on that. I think the reason why they have the eighty five percent on the elected side is the chief deputy there in the office. There's a situation where you could have, and we talked about this, where they could overtake or get close to the elected official, so they had a cap. We don't have any that have overtaken it, but there's a, there, there's a kind of a minimum difference there, that fifteen percent gap that they had to set. I don't know. I don't know if that's the best, it should be eighty five or not, but that's what they suggested.
When did it go to eighty five? I was thinking seventy five some year ago.
No, it was just regular eighty five and that's back when, when we implemented everything about five, six years ago.
You think it's been some years back?
About five or six, since we started.
That it was changed from seventy five to eighty five?
I don't know about the seventy five, I don't know about that. I don't know if it is ever seventy five, but.
So what's the wage study say for that now? Percentage?
So what's the wage study say for that now? Percentage, what is that percentage?
Eighty-five. It's eighty. It's not changed.
Except, except for.
For the chief deputy?
Chief deputy, they took away percentage and went to a straight recommendation.
If, okay, what's that percentage?
Let me take a look.
Just targeted.
I know, it's a target.
Oh, okay.
But what is the percentage?
Yeah, um. Let's see here, I think that's under special ops. The midpoint is eighty-one thousand, four sixty-two.
So roughly eighty percent?
The low is seventy-three, three fifteen.
Seventy-three percent roughly. Um, a little less, actually.
Let's see here. Yeah, and I've not reprogrammed that out, but, uh, we'll, we can figure the math and kind of share that with everybody, just to make sure. Yep. Because right now it's seventy, yeah, the base right now is seventy-seven, oh seventy-five, because of the point seven. The low point is seventy-three, three fifteen. So he's already, he's in one of those situations with the COLA, where the COLA's better, because he's already ahead of the target. The seventy percent is better than what the regular suggestion is, so.
If something happens to our spectacular, wonderful sheriff, who takes over?
True. There you go. That's.
Is that the only one that's not?
That's the only one that's eighty-five percent.
Well, chief deputy coroner is not.
I mean, you would have to, yeah.
Pretty short, pretty time, dude.
But that's not high dollar.
Now, Sheriff, do we have some additional preparations that we're going to do tonight?
Yeah, we're not there yet. I'm trying.
And again.
I'm trying.
The more we knock out tonight, the better, but we don't have to, we still have time. But the big one was getting the wage, those COLA things for Sheila. This, this other stuff, we can come back to some of these items that are next.
So what's the difference in?
Everything by your October fourteenth meeting, or your public hearing. So you don't, what you call it as a meeting, what you vote on tonight is what has to be presented at the fourteenth. Your official adoption date is October twenty-seventh. You can make some changes based on the public hearing, but you've got to be able to provide copies and stuff to the public on this meeting on the fourteenth. So there's not a lot of time, there's not enough meetings scheduled before the fourteenth, too. So what you decide tonight, or your vote to make the changes, is what has to be presented to the public.
So what's the differ, I mean, on the difference in money-wise, if Matt's was eighty-five percent versus what their target was?
Let me do the figure here real quick, so sheriff. It's right there.
But then your jail commander's only sixty percent, right?
Do what?
Then we would have to bring jail commander up too, or no?
No, well.
That's.
We're talking.
Okay, so right now, at the seventy percent, the chief deputy sheriff is at seventy-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars. At eighty-five percent, it's ninety-three thousand, five ninety-two.
What's he currently?
He's at, he's at seventy-seven and seventy-six.
So that's the low point?
No, that's just doing percentage.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just the percentage that he has in mind.
Right, if we went from seventy percent to eighty-five, if you were sticking with the percentage idea.
Okay.
Then it'd be ninety-three thousand, five ninety-two.
How many counties are at the eighty-five percent?
I don't know.
Okay.
They're not all at eighty-five percent, I'm sure.
So what was the low, low target for him, I mean, just out of, to put another?
The low was seventy-three, three sixteen. The midpoint was eighty-one, four sixty-two, and the high was eighty-nine, six oh eight.
But the midpoint isn't, isn't a percentage, it's just a midpoint.
You're right, right, they took away the percentage part, and went to a regular target.
So he didn't have a midpoint anywhere. He will get the midpoint.
If you stick with the percentage, then yes, it's going to be whatever the sheriff is. And then you figure the percentage on the sheriff. If you don't do the percentage, it's going to be based on the midpoint, low point, that kind of thing.
But we, we do the percentage for all the other chief deputies, correct?
Yes, in the offices.
Well, I'm going to test the waters, I'm going to make a motion, I'm giving, is it the eighty-five percent?
That's the figure I gave, yeah.
Ninety-three thousand.
Before you go too much, who was the other chief deputy?
Yeah, and then coroner, uh, there's chief deputy coroner in there.
Can we see that?
Right now, let's see what the percentage is, so if we did that would go, right now, the chief deputy coroner's at eighty-one, sixty. It would need to go to twenty-four, six twenty-four.
Yeah.
So.
The U, we've discussed that our coroner's like up around the high point, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. Most of your electeds are, so.
I made a motion, I'm sure, was there a second?
So you made a, restate your motion, please.
Then we go to eighty-five percent. Chief, Matt's position.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Joe.
I'd like to say that I'm extremely torn between not sticking with a system that we're paying for, that really helped to straighten things out over the last couple of years, and keeping a steady, growing system in a box. And the flip side of me is making sure emergency services and the necessity stuff is well-funded, so we're not having people stole from us. So, where we're at in that, I don't know. But I do remember me voting on something years ago and separating other things out, and I, it came back to bite.
Yeah, and I, I love Matt Miller, he's a great guy. And he does awesome, and, and, and yeah, you could argue that the seventy is certainly not enough, really, easily. I get the eighty-five thing, I would rather us go back and talk about why that's the way it is, because this is the first year where they're recommending specific targets, and not a percentage for this position. I think it's important that we get a bit more backstory on that before we change something drastically, or open up Pandora's box on something. Because I think the point is, is if, if you are going to have a chief deputy of some elected official, and it doesn't matter whether it's the sheriff, or the auditor, or whatever, if you're going with the, the same uniform percentage as, as applying that rule, okay? That's consistent. But there is a reason why there is some difference there. There's something behind those numbers that I think we should get the answers to before we jump. That's just my, my opinion on it, but.
Well, there's more.
And then you have the chief, then you have the chief deputy coroner, and that kind of thing, too.
Brian, do you have something?
I, I, I can't survive without Matt, I can't. Matt has proven himself dedicated to this county. He, he's not a native to, to Owen County, but he has put his roots here, he's, he's raising his family here. He has worked tirelessly for how many years in this position? He has dedicated himself to here, to lose him would be devastating to this county. I think it's only fair that we give him eighty-five percent. I, I, I asked, what, a few weeks ago, for seventy-five percent. Knowing that the rest of the chief deputies get eighty-five percent, well, I would have asked higher, but Matt, Matt is indispensable, I, we cannot lose him. And I'm not saying he's willing to lose, he, he's dedicated. More dedicated probably than, than, than a lot of people that work for county government. He takes on so many responsibilities that he doesn't have to take. Look at what he's tackled with nine-one-one center. The guy, the guy has worked his butt off, I've barely seen him today, because he's trying to put out fires in nine-one-one. That's not even our department. That's not our responsibility. But he does it, because it's got to be fixed, because it benefits our department, it benefits Chris, it benefits Jack, it benefits fire. The guy earns it. Ain't getting it for free, he's worked for it. And he's proven himself a valuable asset to this community for years and years.
I think my problem is, is, I mean, if all the other chief deputies get, you know, eighty-five percent, I mean, it's, if we're talking fair and keeping everything consistent, I mean, we've got to do that, so.
Yeah, I'm sure I called for that.
Okay, we had a. You said, right?
Yeah, I think Joe said.
All right.
And so, just. Yeah, and I was just going to get a little clarification, it's specific, though, to the chief deputy for the sheriff?
Yes, that's what.
You're not including the other two?
I don't know, it was not in the motion.
Okay.
Chief deputies, sheriff.
Coroner, or, okay.
Got it. All right, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Pandora's box, open.
All those opposed?
Sorry, Anton.
No, it's okay with me, congratulations.
But Matt was, Matt was eyeballing, I was scared.
Well, I just, I mean, we've set a precedent there across the board, and, you know.
I'm just not certain that's the, was the logic behind that. That's why I wanted to get more information, to find out why, but, yeah, it's simpler.
It's that box you just got to speak of.
So.
I like mistakes, meaning murder.
So.
All right.
Later, because that's a little more complicated.
Mother's calm. I give you copies of insurance information that we received from monitoring on representative at the last commissioners' meeting, this is the information that they presented. They are looking at the United Healthcare as, as the target, unless something major changes before October the second. I didn't even know if this would adjust the insurance, and if any, or what it would add to it. I just wanted you guys to have copies, so you could see what the commissioners are looking at, contract-wise.
You're saying United Healthcare? Here you are, just answering, United Healthcare, I'm sure they might be looking at.
So bottom line is, they're, they're working very hard to keep, keep that overall change as low as possible, and it looks like it's going to be fairly flat. But based on our ten percent increase we baked in, or maybe a little better?
Probably a little bit.
Okay, well, that's good.
The co-pay seems to be, you know, for pretend, seems to kind of be the only difference. So, but, but I think the ten thousand is good.
Madam Chair, any more to add, any more?
We, yeah. Okay.
The thing you had in the pile was additional appropriation requests. If you want to hear them tonight, you can, if not, they will be on your agenda on October fourteenth. If you decide to listen, you know, hear them tonight for advertising normally, then they can be voted on at the October fourteenth meeting.
I'm going to make a motion, we proceed with advertisement for the October meeting.
I second that.
Made by Anton, seconded by Nick. Um, are we going to hear these requests, or we're just making a blanket?
Advertisement.
Okay.
We would have a hearing at the next meeting, all right?
Right.
There, there was one of them, that, on that explanation of requests, it said that they could have specific line items if needed, and that will definitely need it.
Yes, yes, to. You'll get with me on the line items, and all we're going to do, see how they'll be.
Because I definitely want to hear some, some excellent explanation on this.
So, motion to advertise, was there a second?
Yes, but.
Who was that? Nick?
All those in favor?
The only other budget thing maybe is, when we had the jail discussion, we talked about the, kind of the financial plan. I think we, don't we need to go ahead then and budget? We need to bring those numbers up to match, at least what we were thinking. For example, in the correctional facility fund, we only appropriated at the moment a hundred and fifty thousand for maintenance. But shouldn't we have a loan, loan payment line item, and then up that to the million-whatever that that fund can cover? And have that line item ready to go?
Is that for the whole of us?
It'd be for the overall project, you know, for the bond payment.
So two-point-one?
Right, right. We'd have to maximize the correctional facility to its max, and then we'd have to go into year eleven-seventy, and up that to make up the difference. We've got enough cash, because remember, for next year, we were going to take the unspent cash from twenty-four and twenty-five, plus what we already budgeted for twenty, that's going to total the million we need, or, you know, the difference. And then for twenty-seven, we were hoping to then use the proceeds from selling the old property to, to backfill and cover towards that. So, we're going to be putting ourselves into twenty-eight fairly easily here with all the cash and all the stuff we have. But I think we do need line items that actually allow for the expense, because the bond folks are going to want, they're not going to want us to add an appropriation to a June meeting or something to cover it. They're going to want to see something that's solid, that we've committed to, to cover that payment.
So I think it's going to hit, and I think you're going to have a better bond because of that.
Yeah, maybe, right? So, that's what I recommend, is we get rid of the maintenance line item, we put in the, a loan payment, or whatever the appropriate number is, and then we appropriate, put the, at least a million, you know, whatever that amount is in there, and then we do something similar in eleven-seventy.
Do you want that in motion, Anton?
Yes.
I'm second to that.
Okay. Now, what was the motion like?
Whatever you would have said, man.
Okay.
I think, I think if you're okay with a friendly amendment to, that will work with the sheriff and the auditor to get the exact dollar amounts, and make sure that they work between those two funds. Okay, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carried.
The other motion we need is to allow some of the council to work with the auditor's office to make sure that we have all the right numbers plugged in to present at the public hearing.
You need that in motion? I make a motion that we allow the auditor's office to work with the council, put all the figures together. Need any more in that motion? Okay.
Motion made by Nick, accepted by Daniel. All those in favor? Motion carried. I mean, we had one more thing that we were going to discuss.
Ah, yes.
There was a, um, Anton has come up with a really good idea, I kind of thought this for some time, but had not even voiced it. The economic development for ADC has their contract, but when, and, I don't know where it went. Anyway, Norman, Anton and I had a lunch to talk about something else, and that came up, and Anton said, why did we put that under the umbrella of the county? And made, and you want to discuss a little bit more?
So, okay, so economic development's been a hot topic. And I think the general message or concern that folks have been having is the accountability side, and the fact that we have not had a contract for any kind of services for years between the county and the separate entity of the Economic Development Corporation. So that led to, okay, well, we need a contract, put one together. And that's something the commissioners are dealing with, and they've got a draft, and they're working on that. But, that may not necessarily come about. They're, they may not approve that. They may not want to enter into a contract, and they may not want the contract that's been drafted. So we have to kind of think ahead here, because I personally think we need to invest some money in economic development. We can't not put some money towards that, we have to have some skin in the game with that. And I think the seventy-five thousand that we currently give is an appropriate amount. But how we spend that seventy-five is where the difference is. And I think that's where we can look at some other options. If we don't give, or the commissioners decide not to do a contract, then I feel we need to make sure we have a Plan B where we, we have. then I feel we need to make sure we have a Plan B where we, we have basically an in-house economic development department, if you will. We can pay our own person that can do that. And then we, as elected officials, have the accountability and the say over that department, not a third-party entity. And that could create some opportunities for us to help the auditor in dealing with the EDC, and some of the things that go on there.
Also said something about, you know, possibly, you know, grant writer.
Maybe grant writing, as Joe has mentioned, is maybe have a grant writer, because a lot of things that involve economic development involve the need for grants, whether it's for infrastructure or other projects. There's a lot of things that we could probably check off on a list that having that in-house could do for us. Now, that being said, we have no plan. We have no idea how to structure that, we don't have a job description, we don't know the dollar amounts. This is very preliminary thought, but what does the council think about exploring this further?
I make a motion that we explore, explore this further. I make it a discussion.
I second it, and I think, I'm sure other counties have EDC programs that we can copy and paste and pull together and look at what they have, and then go from there.
I think it's an excellent idea, I mean, just as Anton said, I mean, it would give more structure, give us a little bit, you know, we would have a little bit more say-so on where the money.
Certainly could.
And some of the actions, so, I'm, I'm all for that.
I'm sure.
If we're on the discussion of oversight, things of that nature, like, there's other entities that are given money that we have no oversight or contract, is there a contract at the library?
There is separate governmental entity anyway.
There's a word that we put somebody on, I mean, we, so.
This is, this is one area where we lack here, and it's, it's boiling to a point where.
We.
There's nobody from the council on.
No, but we appointed a.
There's citizen appointments.
Citizen. But the council appointed it, so, but like, like Anton said, that's a different entity.
I will say Marcy has sent an email to be on the commissioner's agenda on October the second, and then requested to be on the council's on the fourteenth to approve their contract.
Okay, yeah, so I think it's important timing-wise to make sure we bring this up for discussion. I think commissioners are going to be first in this, but I think with your motion to proceed, we can then work on this, because between Polly and I and whoever else wants to jump in on this, we can help come up with some way of making it work. The other thing too, was we, we talked about updating our abatement program, it's very outdated. It doesn't account for a lot of things that are happening right now in Owen County and other business opportunities that exist. Instead of having someone else determine the terms of those contracts and driving that, why not have our own person doing that, for example? And that's where having it in-house can help direct that. The UDO is the same kind of situation, it's very messy how that was, how that started. It, it probably wouldn't have been so messy if we did it ourselves in-house and had some, one of our individuals, a director, you know, helping, helping shepherd that through and doing the right process, and having the oversight of the commissioners and the council directly on that process. So there's just things that I think the in-house solution would be helpful for. And I'll mention Marcy's own words, if you remember during our workshop. She said she'd love to get this off, off the, get off that tax, right? And I'm sure that, you know, that she has probably had increased pressure over the last couple of years, and for better or worse, and I'm sure she would love to shed some of that too. So surely we can explore some kind of option that could work for the benefit of everybody in this, so.
So are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Motion carried.
But for now, the seventy-five, still in the budget, still see what the commissioners do with that, so.
Specifically, if they do not sign the contract?
Yeah, because I would say if they sign the contract, then there's no reason to double that, you know, so.
All right, do we have anything else?
Is anybody going to present that to the commissioners as an option?
I think, I think Polly was, was going to do that.
Sure.
It really is more a discussion with them and more, you don't have to wait for their next meeting, I, you know.
Well, Norm was there when we were talking about it, and he was all in favor, so.
I think it's just to get a conversation for now, but they'll, they'll have to make their own decisions for, at their meeting, of course, but we don't know what that structure will be or, or how it will be framed, so, it just needs to be discussed.
So anything else that needs to be discussed? Sheila, do you have anything? Any other?
I've got a couple things.
Yes.
Whenever you were talking about keeping employees, not losing employees, one thing I didn't hear come up was being able to hire employees. We've, we've got a situation, you guys are all aware of it, we talked, we talked about it last meeting. We haven't been able to hire anybody, worked their soul for that time of wonder at the position for a couple of years, and.
How was your process currently?
I haven't had an update today, it was, uh, pretty bleak until last Friday, remember the glimmer of hope, maybe? But I was busy today with ADA stuff and other stuff, and I didn't have any time to get a, an update from Chris, so. And with that said, I, how do you determine, uh, extra duties, extra pay? How does, how does that come up, how does that get awarded? We had a, a evidence technician, I think, tonight, that was discussed, you know, that's, that's extra duties and permits, going to get extra pay.
And that was going to be an extra position.
That's a new position.
Is it full-time? Is it a full-time position?
But it's not.
Okay.
It's not been classified yet, though, that's still, that still needs to be done, but we need it, we need a job descrip, we do have a job description, but we're working through that, yeah.
There's a lot to that ADA stuff, and it's been completely ignored since it's been, I've been volunteering totally for it.
I remember that.
That needs to be discussed, I think. And, this is not taking anything away from Matt Miller, because everything Sheriff White said was spot-on about Matt Miller. But you've got another cat in this room, just as dedicated, just as everything else. They're, they're cut from the same cloth.
I agree.
And you both need to be kept in mind when those races come around, that's all I got.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else from the audience?
And Kelly, you stuck around for the whole meeting. She either thought, I'm not going to do that, or I'm going to do that. We'll see, right? Thank you for being here.
All right, we have our public hearing on October fourteenth, as Sheila said, so that's going to start at six.
It's on Tuesday, it's a holiday.
Yeah. Is there anything else?
Oh, Christine had something?
I, I do have a thing, on October eighth, Dr. Lindsay Weaver, the state health commissioner will be here, and several state representatives, we are going to do a meet and greet at the EOC at nine-thirty. You all are welcome, I won't be sending out formal invitations, but.
Okay, great.
Make a little bit better space than last year.
Nick, did you make it?
Yeah.
Okay, you stuck at it?
I don't think we need to.
All right.